Good evening, everyone. We're welcome to the Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session Tuesday, October 13, 2015. Calling this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mr. Baltimore.
Here.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Mr. Kuplinsky.
Present.
Ms. Reed.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Present.
Ms. Williams.
Here. Thank you. Council members, please throw all your electronic devices away. Moving on to the invocation, Mr. Baltimore.
Yes, ma'am. Would you all please join me in a moment of silence for those among us and those of us who suffer with mental and physical disabilities? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baltimore. Pledge allegiance, Ms. Wilson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you. Moving on to communications, we have none this evening. Courtesy of the floor, please come to the mic at this time if you'd like to come speak about anything on the agenda. I'll start at my right. Anyone to my right would like to come to the mic?
In the middle?
In the middle.
Hi, Jeremy Domenico, South Allison Hill. I'd really like to thank Ms. Reed publicly for all the effort that she put into the Trash and Trees Forum. I really think that we reached a lot of the public that maybe wouldn't have. I still think we have a long way to go, and I wish there were more press here so that they could convey that Public Works can't do but what they can do to keep up with the legal things. And they're being called upon to do what illegal people are doing, and it's a task that's superhuman, it's beyond control, and hopefully the enforcement will start soon. But I also would like to voice a really great man who once said, you know, ask not what we can do, what our country can do for us. But I really think we, as citizens, need to step up and do what we can for our city individually. If that means rake our own leaves, that's what it means. Pick up your trash, put it in the 95 containers. Let's do what we can to restore this city, because I know everybody that's in front of me and a lot of good people that sat on the panel, we're all doing what we can to restore this city with virtually nothing. And I hope that changes soon. And Ms. Reed, I really want to thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else in the middle?
My name is Robert Kennedy. I'm from Harrisburg. And I came here today really to kind of talk to the families and children of Harrisburg. We are basically psychologically in a crisis, not because the city aren't trying to do all they can, especially Chief of Police. I think he is a role model really for the United States. And City Council already program they proposed. Just to let you know, I'm from the classified services. I have a classified clearance, and my background is with the Rapid Deployment Force. And I'm just saying that not to stand out or say anything, just to let the children know I know what I'm talking about. And I'm also the other trainer, the lead and seat trainer that went to Indian Town Gap with Officer Jenny Jenkins. Okay? So we have some strategies and models that we like to put out. But what I want to say to the children of Harrisburg, we are in a situation where if you continue to stereotype yourself because of the issue we're going through in our country. What I'm saying is, if you continue to do the crime that you're doing and do the thing you're doing, there is no other way but to be stereotyping and programming yourself to be on the list of basically terrorists. I'm struggling to say it. But the United States right now is looking at all the issues in all the communities. And really, I'm telling you, ladies and gentlemen, if we continue to do what we're doing and not work with our kids and stuff, our high crime rate is nothing. Because once you get on the terrorist list, you don't know who you are. And I'm begging the children and families of Harrisburg to come together, and let's all work together to stop that. If you want to need to get in touch with me, I'll be glad. I can't give you any classified information, but I'd be glad to let you know that we need to stop. We really need to come together and work together and stop. We can't continue to blame the city. We can't continue to blame the police officer. We can't continue to blame our state and counties. We got to blame ourselves. We got to come together. There was nothing I would do to harm anybody, okay? But if the kids don't stop, you're setting yourself up for failure. Because once you get on the terrorist list, and they don't have, we don't have now, we don't have another plan now but to call it like it is. And I'm just, I'm really begging. I know I'm struggling. I'm begging. I'm begging the kids to really try to understand what you're doing and stop it. Let's all come together and get our communities and families and sit it together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Boyd. Perhaps I would have never even entered into this room this evening. The door's shut. Community would not even be, they would look at this as that maybe perhaps this legislative meeting will not be held this evening. Most of the time, the door is wide open. But then again, who am I? Nobody. I came here this evening to say to the seven honorable ones that sit on this council and also the Honorable Mayor of the City of Harrisburg this evening. It is getting ready to get cold. The money, the grant money is flying all over the city. Most of the people that are receiving these grants come and beg every year, and they get it. I'm looking for something special this year. Even community economic chair said, "Not this year." But we do need a shelter for the homeless of this city. But then again, perhaps once again, I'm just barking up the wrong tree. But the main reason why I'm here are the nonprofits. I get so tired of entering into the Broad Street Market and turning around and wondering why that isn't fixed, why there's urine on the floor, why devocation is here, and someone's telling me, "Shut up and get out." I have also been accused, and I've also, they tried to arrest me numerous times, but guess what? I'm still here. I am a resident of this city. I know my constitutional rights. I'm asking you, the seven of this evening, what are you going to do about the Broad Street Market? Honorable Mayor, he's still sitting here. Everyone that we hear in this great city, they're passing the buck. The ones that go to the Broad Street Market and building and housing, I've been told, do not target anyone on this panel, don't even mention names. So I'm not going to mention any names. Building and housing, Broad Street Market, money allocated, what happened? Old people coming into the Broad Street Market, we have no access. Why? We have, once again, the health inspector, we have someone that took his place, but we don't see him. Once again, you hold the keys to this city and also this honorable mayor. So once again, I'm asking, when will we have someone in this city that will stand straight and say, "Enough is enough"? I'm still waiting. I'm not going anywhere. But my biggest complaint, again, is this. The police are doing an excellent job. But you've got to remember, I used to be a criminal. I'm asking this panel and I'm asking this mayor, you gave almost $250,000 to the police. Open up those centers. Open the centers, the one that's uptown, the one that's on the hill. Open the centers. That will deter a lot of crime. But then, once again, no one listens. But they're getting paid. So once again, it's been an honor, and I hope this time you'll listen. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Raymond Mott. I live at 2402 Bellevue Road. And after hearing some of the things by the gentleman before me, I do know we have issues as far as our children and our adults and our seniors and people who are displaced and need a place to stay. My two complaints are very small, but one is a little serious, and that is the pothole situation. And I know everyone is kind of aware of it. I know I've talked to the office of the city that takes care of that, and unfortunately, I did not get anywhere this year. I called the mayor's office. I was put on a list. That list is still open, I guess, because the potholes are still open. And the main concern is, is we're about the fourth house in off of Market Street. And at the beginning of Bellevue, there's about five potholes. And I know, including my wife, who comes home that way every day as well as I do, you have to slow down almost to a stop in order to avoid the potholes to get through that section of road. That is also backed up with traffic. And as I said, as my wife has said, somebody's going to get hurt. And if somebody gets hurt, we got a lawsuit. We don't need a lawsuit. So anything that can be done, should be done. Don't do my house, but do that front of that road at least, and get that situation taken care of. The second thing I was bringing up tonight is the leaf situation. I know that's an issue. I know it's a tough issue. I think we've already, unfortunately, added more weight to the garbage as it is now because we're no longer putting the glass in the recyclable container. That's a lot heavier than five piles of leaves coming out of my house every year. But I do think that we ought to look in a way to have it either picked up with the trash because it doesn't weigh as much and take it in that manner, rather than put it in bags, have another truck come out, have to do the same pass that the people are doing to pick up our trash. And it seems to me, there's got to be an easier way. Now, with those large containers, I only put mine out once every two weeks because they're that big. They'll hold all that. So even put them in there and do it an odd week or something and make it just leaves, I don't know. But I do think there should be an easier way to do that and still save money, and maybe not as much money, but at least get the job done, because the leaves are coming, and it'll be soon. So anything the City Council could do, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the middle? I'm into my life.
My name's Debbie.
The City Council.
My name's Debbie Wright, and there's a top sheet. Look, everybody gets one. There's a top sheet and...
Debbie, can I please give you your address, please?
What's that?
Your address, please.
1812 North Street, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania.
Thank you, for the record.
Thank you. And there's a top sheet, number 5001, that I sent this past September 29. And also, the response that was replied to me from the Community Services, City of Harrisburg. And then I was directed to attend a council session and voice my concerns. And then the Community Services would speak with the city engineer. And my subject is turning North, Bragg, Forster, and Bose Streets into one-way streets going in alternate directions. And I've taken pictures of each of the streets, starting with North. And my issue is that these streets are very narrow, and they start from 15 and go on up to 21st Street. And I've lived on my corner for over 10 years, and I understand that North Street, it is an emergency route. But since I've lived there, there may have been maybe two. And I mean, both of the, if one of the times, it was a disaster. Because, because the streets are so narrow, nobody can go anywhere but one car at a time. So, and the speeding is constantly, up and down. And sometimes if, say, for instance, if I'm like at the opposite end, somebody will actually speed up so I can't come down. And this just goes on all the time. And coupled with that, you have folks who want to hold conversations, or the driver, they'll park in the middle of the street, go in the house, leave the car, come out two minutes later, and now you've got cars waiting in both directions. Now somebody has to back up to let somebody through. Now, my husband, he'll comply. He'll go all the way around. Me, if it ain't an emergency, if it's not the cops, the police, or ambulance, I'm going to sit there. But then, they're going to get pissed off because I want to get to my place, and they want to speed off zero to 60 in three seconds. And, you know, should I say I'm sorry? No. I should not have to. But I'm going to sit there, and I'm going to wait. And then, the wintertime, amp that up times 10. You've got two or more feet of snow on the ground, the majority of the snow, it ends up in the street. And then you've got cars and snowplows that can barely make it up North Street because of that little incline, and it gets very slick. And then you've got cars that want to almost hit and bang into your car. You think they're going to stop? Uh-uh. And one time, a guy was fleeing from the police officer. He made such a turn that it knocked one of our personal cars clear up on the sidewalk. And that, we had to declare a total loss. So that was an issue. But anyway, I've watched hit-and-runs on people's vehicles. I even took information down for one, you know, for one neighbor. What he did, I don't know. But anyway, does it sound like I'm complaining? Probably, but I'm not. I enjoy living on North Street, but this is an ongoing issue. Will it eliminate 1,000% of the issues? Nope. Because stuff does happen, and it happens in all neighborhoods. But I feel that, you know, like turning these streets into one-way would help at least, I'd say, 75%. And you know what? I'll take that. I will. So, I mean, so, I mean, I don't know what I have to do next, but I'm just hoping that the City of Harrisburg be able to do something. And I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. And you just, you're lucky you happen, we happen to have Mr. Martin here this evening. You might want to take a couple of minutes to speak with him because they have to do a traffic study.
Okay. All right.
So, Wayne Martin.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move on with the agenda. Approval of minutes. Approval of the legislative session minutes of September 22, 2015. Are there any deletions, omissions, or corrections, council members? Hearing none. Minutes stand as approved. Reports of committees. Report from Chair Williams on the Administration Committee meeting of September 29, 2015. Did you have a question? Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Okay. I'm sorry. The Administration Committee had a meeting on September 29, 2015, at 5:30 PM. In attendance were the Chair, council members Daniels, Reed, and Wilson, along with Mr. Daniel Long, Project Manager from HRC, and Wayne Martin, City Engineer from the city. The committee met to discuss three resolutions. The first, Resolution 61 of 2015. It was a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into a professional service contract with Herbert Rowland Grubik Incorporated to provide design, engineering, permitting, railroad and utility coordination, bidding services, and construction management inspection services for city-owned bridges, Harrisburg 10 and Harrisburg 23, the project. The City of Harrisburg owns and are responsible for 16 bridges throughout the city. HRG, who has been inspecting bridges for the City of Harrisburg for 13 years, found on Bridges Harrisburg 10 and Harrisburg 2 conditions that need immediate repairs. The brick masonry has deteriorated and shifted, causing the steel plate supporting roadway to shift. And the strip seal at the abutment is also showing signs of deterioration. The estimated cost for the scope of work will not exceed $77,700, and funding for the project will come from the Liquid Fuels Fund and will be subjected to PENDOT approval. The project will take four months to bid out and six months to obtain the waterway project permit through the Department of Environmental Protection. Since this is a professional service contract, it was exempted from public bidding, but HRG will place advertisements in local newspapers for the bidding process. With the information provided to us by HRG regarding these two bridges, I would ask that the full council give an affirmative vote on this resolution so we can begin the process to repair them. Moving on to the next committee business for discussion was Resolutions 81 and 85. And they were the approval appointing Ms. Danielle Bowers to serve on the zoning hearing board and Ms. Asha Green to serve as an alternate member on the zoning hearing board. Both Ms. Bowers and Ms. Green are outstanding young women who have an impressive educational background, as well as professional experience, and certainly will be an asset to have them to serve on this board. It is refreshing to see the youth of our city taking an active role in government. I applaud you both for your willingness to help bring about change for the City of Harrisburg. I ask this council for affirmative vote for both of these fine young women. And that is my report on the Administration Committee. Moving on to ordinance, the first reading, we have none this evening. Ordinance for amendment, we also have none. Ordinance for final passage, we have none. Moving on to resolutions. Mr. Petrowski, please read Resolution 61, 2015, into record.
Resolution 61 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into a professional service contract with Herbert Rowland Grubik Incorporated, HRG to provide design, engineering, permitting, railroad, and utility coordination, bidding services, and construction management inspection services for the city-owned bridges, HBG 10 and HBG 23, the project.
Any questions or comments, council members?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
If we could suspend rules because there were some questions in reference to the bridges that I don't think we got answers to from Mr. Martin.
Okay. Have a motion to suspend the rule. Have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry?
Second.
Okay.
In our meeting, we had, the question came up in reference to whether or not, since a portion of that bridge that they're talking about, the one down by PENDOT, whether the state would be providing any funding. Are we strictly going to be using the city's straight liquid fuels, fuels tax money?
Well, Councilwoman Susan Brown-Wilson, the way, so, PENDOT has two formats of funding projects. One would be state local fuels, and one would be federal-funded projects. This, in order to be a federal-funded project, it has to be on, it has to be on the tip, the Transportation Improvement Plan, which it's currently not. However, there is a discretionary fund for counties. So what we can, what we will do is request permission from, from the tip, from the HATS Committee, to see if it could be used for that, those discretionary bridge funds on the, on the tip. The other mechanism is the liquid fuels funds. If it's a state-funded project, say, PENDOT has some discretionary funds available, as long as HRG sets up the bid documents so that they follow the liquid fuels, the funding source can come from any of those mechanisms. We just have to make sure that they itemize all bid, we call them bid tabs. So if the, they write like the quantities down. So mobilization would be a quantity, and the bidder will have to put down what their bid is for mobilization. Strip seal, strip steel expansion dam would be one quantity, and they have to write down their bid for that quantity. So it'll be broken down into quantities. So the HRG money is actually going to be coming out of our director, Public Works Director budget. That's the engineering piece would be paid out of that. But we want to set up the project so that it can be bid in a manner that's acceptable to the liquid fuel fund. Does that, does that make sense?
It makes sense, but I just wanted to make sure that since, since that bridge is often used, because PENDOT is situated down there, you know, they should share part of that burden. What ends up happening oftentimes is that the city picks it up, but we never go back to the actual users. I mean, and they have something to do with why that bridge is failing as well. I mean, because they decided to put that building down there at the end of that, that waterway there. And so I just felt as though it would be behoove us to actually go and ask the question. And I understand about the tip, but i-if that discretionary money is there, I think we ought to go after that discretionary money, and we ought to be using our state with the fuels tax monies to actually pave some of our streets, because that's what that money is sitting there for also. So I'm just saying, I think that that's what we ought to do. I understand you're the engineer on the project, but I think we need to make sure that we go after all available funds so that we can take and redirect funding that we know can be used for other things that are just as essential or as important within this, this city.
Once the engineer is retained, we'll get a better budgetary estimate as part of the proposal. With that budgetary estimate, construction costs, I mean, we'll, I'll put in all the letters and I'll copy the clerk on all letters requesting discretion, use of discretionary funds and otherwise, other funds available for the project.
Okay. One other thing I have in this one, dealing with HRG, I want to make sure that we are in compliance with the city in terms of making sure that as this goes out for bid, that we have ample minority suppliers that are in this package. Because oftentimes, the bids go out, resources are out there, people are not tapping into them. So I want to make a note of that also, for the record, that we make sure that they're engaging the minority community in terms of dealing with engineers. We have engineers out here who are minorities, people that understand bridge construction, maintenance, tearing down, building back up. They know all about girders and steel beams. So I want to make sure that HRG understands that we're going to be watching this as it unfolds to ensure that they're also in compliance with making sure we're at least getting the 30% participation. And I understand this is no bid, but at the same time, we need to make sure that, that we are actually putting business out there within this community for people to be able to make a decent living and see, and see some income out of this as well. Okay? That's my only comment. Thank you.
And I do believe Mr. Long was very clear in stating that he will be present at the bidding process and that he will ensure us that we will have enough, a large percentage of minority participation. And also, while we're at it, how about the PENDOT Rapid Bridge funding that I think that you're looking to? Because we also talked about Amtrak and Southern for the railroads. Whether they would be willing, I know Ms. Wilson had mentioned about the railroad going under the one bridge, would they be willing to participate in the expense to, at the cost?
They said they would. The Rapid Bridge Replacement Project, PENDOT Project, is for PENDOT-owned bridges. I did look, I did confirm that.
You did? Okay, you did confirm that. How about...
And that's actually a design-build project, and those who have already been identified, at least the first, first round, but it's, it's PENDOT-owned bridges, not locally-owned bridges. Amtrak and Norfolk Southern, I mean, I, you know, this is, my background is bridge engineering. I've done it, you know, 10 years. I've never actually seen Amtrak or Norfolk Southern pay for anything. That's, you know, maybe there's some anomaly out there, but if I, if somebody figures it out, let me know.
Let's make an effort. Let's see if they do, since they, you know, intercepts, I think, under the one bridge of ours.
We're lucky when they agree to allow us to fix our bridge. And that's how, that's how bad it is.
Well, they use it too, so...
And they will probably charge for them to review our plan, just so, you know, that's, that's how, these are federal-funded agencies that really stick it to the local municipalities.
Yeah.
But we'll work with them. Hopefully, let, let them understand the financial situation of the city and see what we can do.
The last time it cost us about $423,000 with the McLeish Street Bridge, which was a couple of years ago. So it does cost when you engage them.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, council members? Okay, hearing none. Motion to go back into session?
Yes.
Thank you. First and second, we're back in the session. Since there's no other questions on Resolution 61, please call the vote. Mr. Petrowski.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore.
Yes.
Ms. Daniels.
Yes.
Mr. Kuplinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Reed.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Resolution 61 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 81, 2015.
Resolution 81 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allen. It's a resolution appointing Ms. Danielle Bowers to serve on the zoning hearing board of the City of Harrisburg.
Any questions or comments on Resolution 81? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore.
Yes.
Ms. Daniels.
Yes.
Mr. Kuplinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Reed.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Resolution 81 passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 85, 2015.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, that resolution was to be pulled since we're going to make a request to see about reassigning that individual to a different committee.
Okay, but I thought we were going to, wait, let me...
85, we were going to pull.
Wait, let me do a motion to suspend. We have a motion to suspend.
So moved.
Thank you. Now, Resolution 85 was Asha Green, but I thought we were going to ask Ms. Asha Green to step into the other position.
That's the planning. Yeah, but before we can do that, we need to ask her before we can just vote on it.
Yeah, but before we can do that, we need to ask her before we can just vote on it.
So, you're not, you're not considering Ms. Patterson?
Well, that would be...
CRW?
We were going to call both of them, is what I thought we agreed to do.
I thought we were just going to do this, leave Asha here and leave, and do CRW? You said that we could...
No, I was just identifying openings that are coming down the pike.
Okay, but it, three members of Harrisburg Municipal, serve on that board?
On CRW?
Yes.
I, I, I do not have that memorized, matter of fact. Everyone has to live in the service area of, which is larger than the city, and I, and at least two, if not three, have to live in the city.
Okay. So, we're not considering Ms. Patterson for that CRW?
Well, that's not on the...
That's not before us.
No, I know that's not before us, but I know we were in caucus.
Yes, we would, once we get the response, once we get the response from Neo, as to whether she can or cannot.
All right. Well, I will note that's for the mayor's office.
Yes, well, for the mayor's office to, to come over there. But with Ms. Green, it had to do with changing her to the planning committee, and we were going to call her.
Okay, Harrisburg Planning Commission, okay.
Yeah, for the planning commission.
Okay.
Versus the alternate.
That's fine. Okay. We'll pull 85. Moving on to Resolution 80, I'm sorry, motion to go back into business?
So moved.
Thank you. First and second, thank you. Resolution 86, 2015.
Resolution 86 of 2015 was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution approving the fifth proposed 2015 budget reallocations.
Replaced in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Resolution 87, 2015.
Resolution 87 of 2015 was moved by Mr. Kuplinsky, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution approving the preliminary final land development plan submitted by Mike Kosick of the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency, or PHFA, to add approximately 35,800 square feet of office space to the PHFA's offices at 211 North Front Street.
Replaced in Economic Development Committee. Moving on to old business, council members, any old business? Hearing none. Moving on to new business, council members?
I have one.
Okay, we'll start. None, Mr. Baltimore?
No.
Ms. Daniels, none? Mr. Kuplinsky?
Sure. The Community and Economic Development Committee will be having a meeting next Thursday to discuss Resolution 87, 2015, and potentially some other legislation.
Okay. Thank you.
Meeting will be at 6 o'clock.
Ms. Reed?
Yes, we, the last meeting of our Trash Trees and Talking was last week. It was a great series. The mayor's office is committed to continuing those discussions with what's going on basically with the Public Works Department and what goes on with this community. One of the biggest things I want to bring out from that, that a lot of people may or may not have had, the mayor had a press conference on it. There was a big conversation about it in our last meeting, it was about the leaf collection. There will be, there won't be any major changes, but the main thing is, is that the city's asking you, if you put, if you want to be sweeping your leaves, put them in the brown bags. If you would like to get some brown bags, you can go out to the Public Works Department, 1820 Paxton Street, and they will be collecting your leaves on the same day that they sweep your streets. So, they will not be collecting, well, if you put them next to your trash, they'll go with your trash. But if they're going to be recycled, then you need to put them out on the curb the same day as your street, the same side of your street that's being swept. Okay? And they need to be clean leaves, which means that you have to take the litter out of your leaves and sweep them up, put them in the brown bags and leave them on the curb the day of the street sweeping. No longer is you to be sweeping your leaves out into the street. And if there's any questions, specific areas, there's going to be some exceptions, please contact Public Works if you have any questions about when is your collection, what can you do and what neighborhood you're in. Because there are some variances. Of course, if you live in a neighborhood that gets inundated with a lot of trees and a lot of leaves, that, you know, historically, they will pick them up by front unloaders. Those things may happen. But I encourage the residents to contact the city to find out specifically what's going on with your leaf collection. But mostly, the main, most important thing is, leaf collection bags are available and limited supply out of the Public Works Department. You can go out, and you can also purchase them at Lowe's. They're $3 for five bags, or the large brown bags. Put your leaves in the brown bags so that they can be effectively recycled. Make sure that you remove all the litter from your leaves. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Allen? Ms. Wilson?
Yep. But Parks and Recs will be holding a meeting on the 22nd of October to discuss Resolution 78. Meeting will start at 5:15.
Okay. Is that it? Okay. Have a couple announcements. Park Harrisburg's annual parking advisory meeting will be Monday, October 19, at the Crown Plaza of Harrisburg, located at 23 South Second Street. And it is the, is a public meeting. So, if you have any questions about anything with the parking, it's an opportunity to